Good evening and welcome to the May 9, 2022 City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross. Tonight's City Council meeting is conducted in the City Hall Council Chambers and brought to you using live video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. It's tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So we're excited to be back in City Hall in person. But we asked for grace and patience this evening as we worked through the hybrid process. Also, just a reminder, please make sure you speak directly into the microphone. And those joining us, those joining us can, are able to hear you. So thank you everyone for joining us tonight. You know, it's great to be in here. It's great to be in there. All right. On City Council, please take role. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Captain Ross. Here, Councilmember Ethan Benson.
Present.
Councilmember Rob Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember James Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Kara Christensen here and Councilmember Joe Johnson.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show that, oh, excuse me, excuse me, Councilmember Fliss A. I was looking down the dial and I forgot that you were up on the screen.
I'm virtually here.
Virtually here, so noted. Right. Thank you. As a reminder, members, let's see recognition for the chair for speaking. And you should raise your hand. Actual. And virtual for. So we're going to do, please stand and join me in the state of such a region. There are present.
I pleasantly like. The United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation of the commonwealth, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So now we've got the first item for regular visits, which is to approve the agenda. Councilor Johnson, second by. That's where Halli. Moved by Councilor Johnson and second by. That's where Halli. Okay, great, any discussion? Any none? All those approve the agenda, say aye.
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 Can you pose a name? Next item of business this evening is a presentation by Richard Anderson on Snopomi Days. Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. And I suppose I should have responded right away and said that Emily Borisnot is, is our, technically our event coordinator. My coworker Emily is going to share the podium here with me. And again, our little slide presentation to tell you what's going on.
Thanks for inviting us to talk tonight. So the Northwest Rowley Museum was incorporated in 1957 and is an institution dedicated to the disciplines of historic preservation and heritage interpretation. The Snopomi Depot is the centerpiece of historic downtown Snopomi and was built for the Seattle Lake Shore Eastern Railway in 1890. It was restored to its original configuration in 1979 and today is the front door to the museum, which serves a combined total of more than 130,000 visitors per year.
Press the button to make it go or?
No, we just say, next slide.
Excellent, next slide. In the context of its role as the anchor attraction of historic downtown Snopomi and with verifiable fiscal management procedures, in 2009, the Northwest Railway Museum was asked by the city of Snopomi to take over management of the town festival. At that time called Snopomi Railroad Days.
Next slide.
Snopomi Days began in 1939 and was originally a celebration of the arrival of Snopomi's first fire truck, but also an event to raise money in support of the new local fire district. On July 29, 1939, residents came out to participate in the first Snopomi Days Festival. Volunteer firefighters stole red cardboard fireman hats for 25 cents to raise funds for the department. Anyone caught without a red hat was said to be subject to a 10 cents fine. The event included a parade, street dance, carnival, and even a water fight between the Snopomi and the Sacoa Fire Departments. Next slide. With all the changes the pandemic has brought to our community, the Northwest Railway Museum is delighted to announce that the original name of our town festival has returned to Snopomi Railroad Days to Snopomi Days. Next slide. And a return of that logo has been developed to help rebrand the event. Next slide. And with that, we now have a new website, it's snopomidays.org. And so if you could, please check out that page, next slide. And this is just a preview of what the first page looks like.
So, next slide, please. It all began with the first fire truck. And the festival committee is pleased to begin the parade each year with this local icon. The grand parade has been held nearly every year since 1939 and is one of the few remaining east side town parades. However, this year, the festival will begin Saturday with the Snopomi Days 5K run at King Street at 8:30 in the morning. We're very excited to have a fun run back again after several years, quite a few years actually of not having that. Next slide, please. Also part of the parade now is our 924, which is a city of Snopomi landmark and a King County landmark. After its extensive rehabilitation was completed during the pandemic, one of the few things we were able to leverage to our benefit with disclosure is we could focus on that in the shop. And we began what we hope will be a continuing tradition of starting the grand parade with its rather spirited whistle. We hope we'll be doing every year. And the 924 proceeded the parade through town, except over on the track instead of up the main road. Next slide, please. Of course, one of the taglines the Northwest Railway Museum uses to market itself is come to the Snopomi Valley and catch a train to another time. Snopomi Days is always pleased to welcome visitors from another time. Next slide. The bands are back. Marching bands have been part of the parade almost since its inception. And Snopomi Days is so happy to welcome back the Mount Sinai marching band. Also returning this year after, after a, I guess, a vacation or a break of 10, 10 years. Our Scottish Pike Band, we're going to have to keep islanders here this year. Very excited to have secured them. They're also going to perform on a live musical stage in Sandy Cove Park after the parade is over. Next slide, please. The Snopomi Fire Department continues to host their annual pancake breakfast with proceeds supporting the purchase of gear for the volunteer firefighters. This, after all, is the whole reason that Snopomi Days started was in support of our fire department. So that's exciting for us to have that happen again this year after a break of two years. Next slide, please. Timber sports began in the remote logging camps, not just here, but in most of the northern latitudes. Now, everyone really wants to be a competitive act over, right? Right? Okay, well, maybe not, but at least you can come and see how it's done. And that will be down in Sandy Cove Park as well. The next slide, please. The Snopomi Arts Commission is hosting the Snopomi Days plein air paintout. Artists from across the region will be painting in historic downtown Snopomi. I lost track of how many years we've been doing this now, but I think it's at least 16 years that we've been doing this plein air paintout with the Arts Commission. I think it's just a wonderful addition. I actually don't know any other east side communities doing this as part of their festivals. So one more thing to make us unique. And while we think of it, I want to add that I think what's special about having the Snopomi Days Festival is that we are presenting this as, as a must do thing for people across the region. In other words, it's a tourist generation or an anchor attraction, at least for, for the day that it's running, the day and a half that it's running. And many town festivals are run more like block parties. And so they're for the community. They're, they're a good thing that they excite the community. But what we feel is different about our event is that we're trying to present attractions at a little bit higher level. I think people want to come from, say, Seattle or Everett, or maybe even Bellingham or Portland to spend a day up in Snopomi. And of course, hopefully you're, visit the local restaurants and the railway museum as well. Next slide, please. History and action is another part of our event. Well, this year, for a bunch of things, reasons I won't get into this year, we're going to be a little bit challenged getting all of the staff we need. It's actually a really big national conference being held that conflicts with our weekends. So we're struggling to get the right people. But we've been doing this for a number of years now. And it's, it's all about rope making, doing laundry, wool spinning, and all kinds of other useful skills you can learn and possibly use one day. Next slide, please. A pub crawl is happening on Friday evening and live music will be performed on Saturday, beginning after the grand parade and ending in the evening. But there is more. The children's field of fun is at the Snopomi Depot and features a variety of inflatable games. The United Northwest Model Railway Club, right in this very room, will be setting up their transportable model railway. So that is a big attraction for kids always. When we have that here, it's been up here before, but we, we did miss them a little bit during the pandemic. Dan the Lego Man is going to return for the first time in several years. He has an interactive Lego exhibit at the Snopomi Depot where he builds Lego models well throughout the day. So he can come back throughout the day and see his little model expand. And of course, we'll be offering train excursions with travel between North Bend, Snopomi, Snopomi Falls, and the Railway History Center on Stone Quarry Road. We'll have the 924 doing demonstrations, the steam locomotive doing demonstrations, but not pulling the train that day. It'll just be downtown showing off its stuff with people along the boardwalk. And there'll be a selection of model tees that have confirmed they're going to come. They'll be in the parade and then we'll have them set up along railroad avenue up by the bowling alley or possibly in front of the 76 station. So we have a lot of things happening. Next slide, please, the important part. Volunteer, sponsor, advise, promote, advocate. This is the community festival. It's all your festival too. We just happen to be the ones managing it for the, for the community. So we hope that all of you can become part of it, even if it's just a visit. But we'd love to have you volunteering or helping advocate for how we get improved exhibits or maybe find a few sponsored dollars. I know that's a slippery slope when you're an elected official, but any help lobbying for that is helpful too. What kind of questions can Emily and I answer for you? Where do you sign up? Oh, glad you asked. SnopomiDays.org and you can click on the link to set yourself up as a volunteer.
Yeah, at the SnopomiDays.org for volunteering. I assume it has a list of options that where you can volunteer or, or do you just sign up? And then you let us know where you need us?
Correct. We'll, we'll, we'll present you with options that you could help out. I would add, because we're working with children and also vulnerable adults, we have a process similar to what the school board uses that we go through for volunteering. And don't want anybody to intimidate it by it's just in the best interest of the community. And then we'll present you with a, with a list of activities that can be involved in. But we'd love to have you, any and all of you. Hopefully it's on the mayor's calendar for the parade too.
Yeah, that's for mine.
Well, I just want to thank Richard and Emily for presenting this tonight and also my appreciation for Richard's years and years of work in building up this amazing program here. I've had the pleasure of being in Kansas City, in St. Paul, and also Sacramento at their museums, their train museums. What we have here in Snopomi is a hidden gem. And most people don't realize what the gem it is. The artifacts that you've collected over the years and restored, it's just simply amazing. And so if you haven't had the chance to visit the museum and ride the train, please do so because it's, it's pretty spectacular. So thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. Our next steam train operation will be on Memorial Day weekend for three days. We are the only organization operating steam locomotives in this part of the country right now. That's an unfortunate result of the pandemic. I hope that will change because there's safety in numbers. We'd like there to be more than just ours, but right now it's the only one. So come on down and enjoy it.
Thank you, Richard. It just seems like a lot of, it's going to be a lot of fun and there's something for all ages, so.
For all ages. Maybe most importantly, maybe most importantly, I just want to say it's been very difficult for all of us to communicate during the pandemic. I'm really happy that we're coming to this now. We need your input on how to make it better. Again, this is a community festival and it's not the railway museum festival. So please tell us what we can do to make it better. What are the things that we can do to help make it better for the business community too? Understanding, of course, that we can never leave 100% of the people. At any time their road has to close, somebody will not be happy. We understand that. But whatever we can do to help soften that a little, please let us know.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Right, thank you for the presentation. And we have kind of agenda tonight, so don't feel obligated to say what you're sort of up to.
For going back to open meetings.
All right. The second item on the type of business is proclamations. And we have three distinct things. So first one is National Police Week. Of course, there are more than 8,000 law enforcement officers serving in our community across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Snopomi. And whereas since the first reported death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made an ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in line of duty. And whereas names of these dedicated public officials, public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 618 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 34th candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13, 2022. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which we observe this, this year, May 11 through the 17. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and the family, any of the flags should be flown at half staff. Now therefore, I Captain Ross, Mayor of the city of Snopomi, do hereby proclaim May 11 through 17, 2022, National Police Week in the city of Snopomi and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. Wakes up with proclamation, you have a few words to say?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for recognizing the sacrifice of our national police officers every year. This year, of the 472 that were added to that memorial in DC. Nine of them came from the state of Washington and COVID was the majority of the reason why. So that is important to know that COVID is also a danger to many of us, including law enforcement officers who are out there. And unfortunately, it's again this year, we lost, we've got two already. Pierce County Sheriff's Deputy Don Colada and Everett Police Officer Dan Rocha have already been killed in the line of duty. So I appreciate the recognition and the proclamation.
So the second proclamation is Emergency Medical Services Week. Red emergency medical services, the vital public, the vital public service. And whereas members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide life saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recover rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services system consists of trained members of the community, first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, dispatchers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other out of hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether care, career, or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized church, specialized training and community education to enhance their life saving skills and serve the community. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by getting maybe Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I Captain Ross, Mayor of the city of Snopomi, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Snopomi, reminding the community that every day EMS responders are faced with many challenges and yet still rise above them all, like continue to respond, support and care for the needs of the community.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of words on this proclamation. This is the 47th annual EMS week that we're celebrating. And ironically, coming out of a pandemic, the name of the term this year is rising to the challenge. We've seen the most challenges that we've seen in the last two or three years since the pandemic began. Emergency responders responding to incidents, not knowing what the threats they were faced with, having to change our entire process of how we do things. Um, this year, we're going to focus on two programs specifically in the fire department. One is on our, on a new program that we began about a year and a half ago. It's this county sponsored program that we partnered with the Redmond Fire Department on called the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program. It's a program that's designed for non-emergency responders to go to incidents and try to prevent us from going to other incidents down the, down the line. It's designed to focus on high risk parts of our community. We don't have a whole lot of those incidents, but we do want to focus on that. The other part of it this year is going to be focusing on the importance of emergency responders that are part of our community. So a lot of our cardiac arrest events occur in the home and we want to make sure people are trained in that. And laypeople as well as other people that are in the community want to make sure that they got the skills necessary to help us respond and improve our service levels. So those are going to be our two themes this year that we're working on this department. So thank you for the proclamation, Mayor.
Third final proclamation, Shin Bill 22-078. Fallen Dafa Day. And I found out the, also notice fallen gone is an advanced practice of self-cultivation based on the teaching of the Buddhist goal. Fallen Dafa is a discipline in which stimulation to the highest quality of the universe. You put truthfulness, compassion, forbearance, the foundation of practice. So as Mayor of the city of Snopomi, I hereby proclaim May 13, 2022, as Fallen Dafa Day. And confirmation is in our packet. Right, at this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on our findings. First, if you're available, to come residence who are not present, have a right to have their banking representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient and orderly manner. Their response will go comments limited to three minutes each. Please be recognized and state your name and state of residence for your record. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is by time to ask questions of council, mayor, or staff or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. And last, we respect the decorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded you. So that, would anyone like to speak any concern this evening? If not, you're good. Anyone? Anyone raising their hands? You know, as President, the. Moving on to the consent agenda. The agenda contains approval of the April 13, April 23, 2022, City Council's special meeting minutes. April approval of the April 25, 2022 roundtable meeting minutes. Approval of the April 25, 2022, City Council meeting minutes. Approval of claims report dated May 3. AB 22-072, Resolution Number 1616, Denial Request from the 2021 Docet 2, Amendment to Coverage of Plan. And I'm in Bill 22-071, Love the Amendment for Services Between the City of Snopomi and Valley Defenders. PL, PLC for Indigent Defense Services. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, check it.
Right, was moved by Councilwoman Watson and taken by Councilor Holloway. Is there any public comment on the site? If you understand that public comments was related to the topic on the consent agenda, please send your comments to two minutes. So raise your hand. Any none? Also, is there any discussion? Any none? All those in favor approve, say aye.
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 Okay, so it's me. All right. Which passes unanimously. Right, we began to committee reports, Public Safety Committee, is there any report?
Yes, it is me. We have a presentation for fire about a grant of your awards and some things as well.
Can you develop? Any report?
No report.
First public work. Any, any committee report?
No report.
Any reports from Finance Administration?
No report.
Right. Moving on, the final report is the committee of the whole. And in Bill 22-61, City Council Prairie Discussion. So at the March 26, 2022, City Council Retreat, Council identified several priorities and expressed a desire to formalize a list of the council priorities for the 23, 24, by any budget. Council had a follow-up discussion at its April 25 roundtable meeting and added additional items and tabled the discussion for this meeting. So we have updated the list, if you can put the list up there, that shows taking the items and categorizing by the priority and then goals, objectives, and then action items. And so. I think we have any changes or additions or edits to this? For to me?
Yeah, so I thought we had a discussion on this and agreed that this was in fact not for the purpose of the by any budget, that this was, that, that looking at by a budget and patients that would require more discussion and more thought that this was in fact just for city priorities, city councils. City priorities, city council priorities, city priorities, but not. For the budget. So I'm surprised that's still listed here. I don't think that reflects what we decided to do.
My apologies, that was on our planning schedules. It was put on there a couple different places. And so that portion of the planning schedule was not modified to reflect that. So. That was in all probability a mistake on our part.
Can we just have the agenda bill revise subsequent? I mean, just to, is that just a?
If that's, if that's a desire of the council, yes, I can do that.
Seconded.
I see council consensus. Alright, so the motion then to remove the twenty point three of the biennial budget.
Words for the twen- motion remove the words for the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four biennial budget from the summary statements.
Seconded by Councilor Fitzsimmons. Any discussion? A nun? All in favor? Say aye.
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 A post nate? Right. So anything? If anyone happens to add to this.
Kind of hard to scroll through.
Councilor Hallway?
I, I guess I took the pressure apart. Walterton Living Neighborhood, their liability, support affordable housing. Not open to that stage, but after that, the only thing we know is insurance standing, insurance owning standard. So. How do we get to the, remind me how we got to the third column?
Then we're, do we have the last matrix? So we started out with. Putting different items under. The list. And so. So this book must put's insurance zoning standards under affordable housing. So I believe this was an effort on staff to. Help council define what the priorities were. We were, we were stuck on. One word at a time, whereas there were, there were many instances where council was using phrases to capture what they wanted to prescribe as their, as their priorities. And so this was staff's attempt to articulate what council was looking for, provide some guidance. This is all a draft. It can certainly be modified to meet your needs.
So I think I think probably column one or two, I think the council will be held accountable to call three. But we think our priorities are actions and prior to those activities, potentially. What, you know, we need to bring the community, all of the political viewpoint in of what do we think we can do, what's important to the community? So I, I really at some other time like further discussion on that column three of what we, the council would like actions going on. And there I, I'm not comfortable with the column, third column is.
But I would. Council is saying that's a. Hand ups. Are you ready?
We know.
Center of the thing.
Can hear you.
Well, I, I guess that's what I, one of the things I was going to say is I'm having a really hard time hearing everyone. Just a note for, for IT. For those that, that are virtual in the future, it is, it is really not easy to hear. My comment was, I think, similar to council member. Holloways in that. While the, the, the priorities and goals, objectives seem to be covering the items that were discussed both at the retreat and at the roundtable, I think there's. For this to be a, a council document, it needs counsel. Discussion deliberation and, and potential action on the action items. I'm, I'm not comfortable with making this a document that is tied to the, to the council without that happening. So I. I don't have my sheet in front of me, but I was going to move to table to the next available. Uh, round table. For council to have further discussion on action items related to the city council priorities.
Okay, so there is a motion to move this to, I think it's about the round table, which will be set up by Councilor Say and seconded by Councilor Hallway. Any discussion? You're okay. May you?
Yeah, I. I agree with us doing that. I, I really feel like we ought to have the third column filled in, but. I, I think. The, the mayor tried to kind of beat us towards that. She did ask us two weeks ago, and I, I felt like we agreed to try and fill in that third column. So. You know, may, maybe that's something for us to learn about what we're likely to do and, you know, what kind of formats we need, but. So I do support that because I, I absolutely agree we should have items in the third column and some of the things are there. Insurance zoning standards, dot, dot, dot. I don't even know what that means. So I, I think we should do this. I'm definitely in favor of the motion, but I think we have to sort of, sort of prepare ourselves and become prepared. I think. You know, if we're going to do this, let's, let's do it and let it start moving and the staff can move with it. Uh, so I guess I'm squalling myself and, and a little bit and just saying, let's kind of commit to. Getting it done at the next, at the round table.
I think Councilor Fitzsimmons?
Um, yeah, um, first of all, I could hear Matt really, really well, and I think it's unfair how well we can all hear Matt, but, um.
I hear Councilman Benson really well.
I, I think that there's, I think it's a really important process to go through to focus the council on what we need to do, but I think that there's also. A fundamental limitation in this kind of process in that there are seven of us on the council. We each have our priorities and a document like this presents all of our priorities. As if they're things that we all equally hold as our primary priorities. And I think it's important to remember that whatever this document ends up looking like. Uh, it's going to have, we're going to have seven different focuses on that document. So. Um, if our expectation is that we're going to come up with a document that lists our priorities all as equally important things to everyone, then. I think we've lost the battle before we started because that's not going to be the, the way any of us looks at this document. You know, I have the, I have a couple of things that I think are the absolute most important things. And that's not going to change because there's a document that lists six other people's lists of a couple of things that are their very most important priorities. Um, so I think this is a really, really important process, but whatever document we come up with is, um. Is the theoretical profit priorities of a person who doesn't exist.
Councilor Hallway?
I'll reflect back to a past council member who often had few or some bad projects. Who were, it was his own projects and quite often he made the list. In the past, we've done this kind of exercise when we had to fulfill with lists. If it gets to that stage, there are mechanisms under which we collectively can start to concentrate now on what collectively we think are the priorities. It may not be everybody's priorities, and there may be some individual priorities left off, but we pull it down to a reasonable focused list. Keeping in mind that if any one of us wants anything, we got to get three other council members to go with. All of our actions pretty much have to be collectively, what are our collective priorities most important for? And I, the other one I would ask, uh, that on the council committees come next week, if we did add a reminder, maybe a little work in time for those committees. I'll, I'll can take, I'll accept the fault of not doing homework, but. Have other things that distract me from council meetings, and I may not do homework. Um, so it'd be best to have that reminder in committees and maybe some time to talk.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I want to fill up of, uh, what I think, uh, what I heard, uh, council member Benson saying about, uh, the idea of there could be. Uh, a, a perception that everything is equally balanced. And I think that perhaps, uh, that was the intent of at our last meeting. Uh, what the administration was trying to direct us to where there was this idea that we were maybe going to vote on these at some point. I just think that perhaps we had the cart of wool before the horse at that time, uh, but perhaps that's kind of where we're going to find that at some point. Um, but just we need to flesh out the list more than what was there perhaps. And I do like this, uh, kind of flow chart, if you will, from. The broadest goal kind of down to getting closer to action items. I'm still not sure that even those qualify as action items. Like to me, an action item would be, we can turn this into an actual bill that goes before council. So maybe there's like a fourth column that needs to come that would be the actual thing the council would pass. Uh, but I think you're right. Uh, that's kind of my thoughts on it.
May you?
And so, um, fellow councilmen, you said this much better than I, uh, Councilman Benson. Joe. So I, I think there's a thing we can accomplish with this document and that I think we ought to accomplish. And then there's things that we ought not to try to accomplish with this. Um, so when I look at the list up there now, for example. Adopt a strategic plan, invest in adequate fire apparatus. Those are, I think, broad things that we're likely to be able to re on, uh, to be important priorities. I think if we get to very specific things like, um, you know, add a street light to, you know. A particular street, I think obviously, in my opinion, that would be. Not only that it's too grand, but that's too specific. And I think we get into that area of, well, wait a minute, that's something that we're each going to vote on. That's not something that's going to be like the unanimous kind of thing. So. That's sort of honestly my focus when I've been brought up, the concern that this is somehow taken as a budget document. I think we need to get into the budget process and really, um, focus on the choices we have. Because we can do a lot of things. We just can't do all of the things. So we're going to have to go through that process, deciding which things we're going to do and not do. And I think there could be a whole bunch of those decisions that are not going to be set in zero decisions. I, I think some of the sort of broader things will be, but a, a lot of those will be much, you know, I need to sort of try and set something up in advance that would tell us how we're going to vote is just a. Well, first off, it's a pool there and secondly, I just don't think it's, it's, it's good use of our time. So. I think if we could really focus on are there things here that really are useful? That help us all and help the staff sort of focus on, yeah, these are areas of pursuit we should spend time on. Any given thing that comes out of it, we'll see what happens, but this is an area that time should be spent on as opposed to other things. Maybe we really focus like that, I think we get to the goal. Um, the one thing I'd say is I actually would refer just not to spend time on it in committees. I think groups of three of us. Would, would, I, I think those create more, I think we just think this through and come to a round table, prepare. I, I really think we'll, we'll be able to get through this. We've had a couple of conversations. I think we source some clarity of thought about what we're trying to accomplish. I think we can do that, but I do think. And I, I have a second request of each committee chair, I mean, committee meetings, remind their fellow councilmen, we need to think about this and be prepared for the round table. Um, I agree with that.
Councilor Jose?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I've been through a number of different goal setting, uh, and objective processes, not only through council, but through, through some of my business activities. And one of the things I, I wanted to accomplish with setting priorities was trying to, trying to move us a, a bit. Not necessarily away from goals and objectives, but to where we're thinking in terms of, of, of priorities. Per se. So normally when I go through a goal setting process, you know, we set the old, the old fashioned smart. Uh, objectives or smart goals, you know, uh, smart being specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and time bound. That's probably something, uh, many of you have already heard that, uh, in the past. So I think that's something that we can do in a round table and we can do. Hopefully just through, through conversation in terms of how we, you know, if we need to refine any of the items in the first two columns, um, we, we smart them. But then when it comes to action items, I think that really does need to be. Available for, for everyone to provide what they think the action items are. And I don't think it's a case of. Being concerned about one council member, one having certain ones that are different than other council members. Those action items can be, you know, quite extensive. The idea being that it gives, uh, gives us direction on how we want to set policy going forward when we do start looking at, at budget and we start looking at, at how we're going to go, uh, going to go into the next, uh, next biennial. So. Anyway, I'll stop, I'll stop there, but, um, I, I hope that everyone supports that we have a round table. Unfortunately, I get to also announce that I won't, I won't be able to be attended at the next council meeting. So I hope that we can do this maybe the first week of June or first council meeting in June.
I think we're on the right approach. We just, we've got to figure out what our action items are. I think that going back to the committee meetings and, and where the. The committee members have a little more specific, like a finer point on these action items, but they shouldn't just exclusively come through. It should be something where the committee, uh, committees can come forward with a number of ideas and then we start putting stickers on it. And just figuring out, okay, this one gets three votes, this one gets two votes. Okay, we're going to prioritize that way and we're going to refine it. And we may throw some of the ideas and put them together, throw them out. They don't meet a certain level of acceptance. So I, I think it's a very work by process.
Any other discussion, maybe? So I think there's also. Other comments? So any other discussion? So. On the public comment, we need to make sure that the, that it continues to be related to this agenda bill regarding the house priorities. And let me your comments to two minutes. We have Mr. Steele.
Hi, so my name is Richard Shields, sixty seven oh one, West Pressview Loop, Southeast. So, um, I would like to, uh, propose a couple of additional things that I think are very important priorities for the council. And I understand from the discussion you just had that it will be, uh, not decided tonight, but I'll like to put this into the hopper. And these all involve engagement with, of the public and serving the public, not just. Not to city priorities, but you know, things that matter to the individual people of the, of the community. The first one is I think we really need to work on public records request response times. Um, I have had occasion to submit some. I know a number of other people who have, and the response times have been quite bad in most cases. Usually the automated response is, we're short staffed. However, we seem to have enough staff to do, uh, distributing pictures of the mayor. Shaking hands with the bunny, Easter bunny, but we don't have time to adequately respond to public records requests. So I would like to see the city council put a priority on providing this, uh, state mandated service to the members of the public. And also I would like to see much more public engagement, not just, uh, the city administration speaking to the public by putting things out. On Facebook or news flashes, but really engaging the public in participating in city government. And my most concerned one is with the comprehensive plan coming up in, I think it's two years. That, um, I think that we should be really reaching out, explaining to the public why it is they would want to have their voice involved with the comprehensive plan. But is, that is the vastly important overarching document that should be driving all of what the city decides to do. And as such, we should really have a lot of people involved with that. Um, I don't know how many were engaged in the last round, uh, I believe, uh, I don't know, five, 10 years ago, but.
Just finish your last statement. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What did you say?
Um, the timer's gone off. You turn this up. So if you just finish your last statement.
Okay, I will. Um, I think that for something this important, if we don't have 500 or a thousand people from the city actively engaged, then I think we've done a poor job of engaging the public on the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, voting on motion, taking us back to the roundtable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Point of order. Can you describe what we're voting on? Are we voting on the tabling to the next roundtable?
Yes, we are.
Okay, sorry, I, I couldn't hear you completely, Mayor, so.
It is your motion to table to the roundtable, which would probably be in June.
So I'll say aye, sorry.
Any votes? Aye. Alright, okay, so we will table to a roundtable.
Just point of information, I'm not sure why it was picked June. I can't be at that June meeting, that first meeting in June. So we'll just go back to, uh, an aid to determine the timing or I, I feel like somehow one person expressed an offset a date spent that, did that happen?
Well, we know that he's not available the last conference in May and you're not available in things concerned in June.
Right.
First, okay.
So, so, Mayor, we have a process of figuring out availability here. Somehow it was restated after the vote. That's something I didn't think we were voting on. So I'm confused.
Yeah, my motion, my, just to clarify for, for the council, my motion was to, uh, postpone and table to the next available roundtable session. I didn't set it a specific time for that very reason, so that we can determine what the next possibility is where we can have all seven council members attending.
And Comfort Benson, can you handle?
I think that's a great plan.
So, uh, two things I'm not sure this one roundtable discussion, I may leave you some of them. Two, I caution us getting into the habit of scheduling council meetings based on individual schedules. That's why there's seven of us and there's the four of us. As long as there's enough of us here, we should proceed on with the business of the city. Not in the lens of individual schedules, individual calendars. Apologize for both of you that, but but why would one council member's calendar?
I don't, I don't believe any council members' individual calendars should play in the discussion. It's the next available time slot around.
Could send out a due call. That work?
There, there is a perfect solution to these questions.
Comfort Benson.
I'm, perhaps if it was, if it was several roundtables over a period of time where we can, where we can, uh, work through it, then if, if somebody has to miss one, the impact of that, that lost council member is not as, uh, as egregious, you know, if it was three shorter roundtable discussions over the course of three different meetings, then we, we could hear everybody within those three meetings and, uh, not make any final decisions until till all seven of us can be together.
And hopefully, as you mentioned earlier, that everyone will submit information so we can put it in the draft and you can review that.
Some, you can always hope, yeah. Hope is great.
Okay. Okay. We can on to second and final report. Can you hold this hybrid meeting update? So I'll turn it over to our director of IT, Kevin Smith.
Good evening. We select, uh, so our council chambers, as we have seen tonight, the microphones are lacking durability to pick up ambience out. We solicited, and there's several others as well, that we solicited orbits to come in and give us, uh, an update for our council chair technology. Of the words you came and did a walk through with our, our staff to find out what we're asking for and where some of our problems were to give us solutions. This week we sit down with those vendors to get an actual quote. The issues we identified were these corded microphones are hard to work with and get them close. Uh, we'll hopefully be replacing those wireless. Uh, along with that is the audio equipment in the back room that's all analog 20 years ago. So it really limits our ability to manage your microphone and give you more game versus you who speak well in your microphone a little less than you do. So we're trying to add some more functionality to tweak your microphone for you. We're also planning to, because the folks on the, this end of the dais have a very hard time seeing our screen in a hybrid meeting. We're planning to add a large screen, uh, in the back of the room on the wall with the awards, uh, to give at least a local point so they can see what's happening on the, on the video itself. Those are some of the bigger issues that we're trying to address. Uh, we will be moving forward. Uh, some of the things we're tweaking around is the, uh, the microphones themselves might have a either a voting button or a raise hand feature, uh, to allow us to have a centralized point for all the raising hands, uh, versus looking down the dais, looking at Zoom, looking at attendees in Zoom and trying to get that to one place. So, uh, hope to have a technology solution in place soon, uh, with manufacturing being what it is. Uh, we are getting along the time to order. So we're trying to get that, hopefully next speaker to do it. Done this year sometime. But, uh, we are moving forward. Hopefully we'll get that figured out. And short of putting boot mics on everyone's heads, gonna need you to lean in and stay on your microphone when you're speaking. You're gonna have a lot of it is. Thanks for working with us and, uh, we'll get there. Any questions?
And you'll, too soon about that microphone that you're speaking into as well, having the taller you are, the harder, the taller one is, the harder stock of that microphone.
Yes, sir. We'll be addressing this as well, um, and also making it for anyone who's sure have a little better time as well. But, uh, for the microphones, we know are an issue. So we'll be addressing those.
Comfort Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, any idea of ballpark costs? So we have heard everything from, um, the lowest solution, what we're asking for is anywhere from 30 to 45,000 depending on the items selected. We've also heard, um, we asked for other things that I'm not gonna talk about tonight because it was rewiring for some of our speakers because the wiring's 20 years old and corroded giving us feedback and other issues. Uh, we've heard as high as six figures, uh, if we go for the full meal deal. Automated Zoom meeting joint for the entire room, uh, reprogramming of a good amount of coding, uh, display. So we're gonna pare it down and give us the, we have to have this, here's some things that have, I've heard requested and these are nice to have. So now ask this, like an all card menu. And then we'll bring that to council and say, yeah, we have to have this if you want these other things to make it like easier it adds on as we go. So bring it up, I mean.
Thank you. That's, that's much more than what I thought it cost.
It's expensive and unfortunately the supply chain issue make that even more so these days. So, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Even reasonable. Obviously, in, in the meantime.
Yeah, I suggest we all just speak up until supply chains get in better shape because those are some crazy figures. I mean.
Yeah, yeah. It was a little shocking when they, when we started asking and you started seeing their eyes.
The bottom end of the ballpark, the home plate of the ballpark was, was really big. Uh, and, uh, so, you know, the home run is that's too far away.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments? Questions? Suggestions?
Anything comes to mind, uh, y'all have my email, please shoot it for me.
Comfort Hesse.
Thanks, Mayor. I know that's the, the challenge of this is just, just that when you have someone hybrid, uh, in a way, uh, remotely of tying into, to the meeting and it, uh, it's difficult, but I appreciate everything you've done, Kevin, to get this to happen and, and, uh, you know, Councilmember Benson speaks very clearly and, and precisely and, um, projects his voice with, with, uh, some vigor that, that we could all learn.
The word you're looking for is statesmanlike?
Yeah, um, so other than, other than that, um, I think it would be good, and I, and I understand swallow, trying to swallow the numbers that you're gonna be dealing with because, uh, technology is not, uh, technology's not cheap. I, I certainly would, could, uh, would encourage, uh, you to look down the road, um, the things that you're dealing with now. When you talk about equipment that's 20 years old, this new equipment will be 20 years old by the time, you know, the next, really quickly, let's just say. It doesn't take very long for, for technology cycles to, to transition. So even though it may be a big ask of council, I think having, having some dollars into good technology is, uh, is gonna benefit everyone, both, both currently and in the future. I must have a, my head must be huge on that screen. Let me just tell you.
Alright, we've got to the mayor's report. Today I attended an affordable housing roundtable put on by our state legislator. And actually the plan is having, we're gonna be in the future. But we talked about what are some, some of the barriers to building more affordable housing and what type of legislation could help with the barriers in the future? And such as the exiting permitting or perhaps state fund impact the zoning incentives, things like that. So there'll be more conversation going on. But that also being obviously a great topic for county development, um, committee. Then I'd be happy to take some of these comments back to the, to legislators who are, you know, working on the types of deals that they want to commit this next session. So in turn, I'm actually meeting with the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness and, um, and also our King County Regional Public Authority, um, with other mayors to talk about roundtable session on homelessness. And so, uh, we'll bring more information back. We'll see what type of topics that they are, that they're talking about. There's a plan for a special budget session workshop on May 31st. So we'll, we'll be sending out calendar invites on that. Um, reminder, we have Jurassic Parley training on June 14th. And as instead of a tour, a moderate farm for councilmembers that haven't been out there, we can have a tour from one of their commissioners. And maybe learn more about it. So I'll send out an invite, probably maybe some Saturday morning and in June or sometimes December. And our committee, committee, our committee members, um, are gonna be Councilwoman Watten, Councilwoman Hallway and Councilwoman Christensen with their first meeting on Thursday. And on May 18th, we have the Soquomie Valley Governments Association will be in person, which is great. It's gonna be starting at 6:30, a month, a month size senior center. And the guest speaker will be John Tanner, Director of Local Services, and Jesse Reynolds, who's the senior planner. And they are working on the subarea plan for the unincorporated area of Soquomie Valley. So this is something that would impact Soquomie. So it'd be great if we get several, many councilmembers to attend as possible. And, and also it's another great way to meet councilmembers and mayors from all the different Soquomie Valley cities. Probably notice maybe some changes to the city's website by our communications team. They've been working on this and the changes make it easier to navigate. So it has a how do I type feature. So if you wanna learn where, where to pay your water bill or watch recent council meetings or apply for a job, I highly know that, applying for a job that, um, that makes it easier to navigate. So there's, there's more, more dates to come. Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to city administrator Sourline to talk about the department reports that are included in the agenda.
Good evening, your honor, members of the council. Um, as the mayor stated, uh, this is the first month where we have our monthly, uh, department reports included in your packet. And while we do not plan to give oral reports to go with them, we are happy to answer any questions that you might have. And as always, I strongly encourage you, if you have questions, uh, please call the department directors, uh, and, you know, get together with a cup of coffee because we can do that now. And now answer any questions you might have. Going forward, we are planning to add additional reports to the packet that you have. Uh, for example, as we go into the special event season this summer, we will be including a special events, uh, report that will not only talk about upcoming events, but we also will try to give you a peek into, uh, our after-action reports after each event. We get together and say, you know, lessons learned, what can we do better next time? And how can we apply that to future events? So that I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comfort Martin.
First of all, I deeply appreciate the, uh, the report and, and the over, um, the overview of the departments. And the one thing that I'd like to see added to that, and that's just kind of our procurement and, and what's kind of in the pipeline and, and coming up. If there's some way of making that, uh, a part of that report, I know that we, we desperately need a new fire engine. And it would be nice to see where in the schedule that might be, um, and, and other equipment that we need for the city. So, uh, the chief career out of the spot.
I think you can find that actually in the CIP.
Okay. I will look there.
Any other comments? Alright, so we have an executive session. City council, I'm in a recess, I'm reconvening approximately 8:10. Anything in session to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to 42.30.1101. City survey, how much time can we anticipate that we will need to make a good session? Who shall attend?
Say 15 minutes. 15 minutes, Mayor, and myself and, uh, Mr. Sourline. Gerard is not here this evening.
Right. 15 minutes will be upstairs in the council room.
And potential action.
A potential action call. Right.
Hey, Mayor. Just received, just received the email, uh, link for the Zoom, for a Zoom connection from Mr. Smith. Are you intending for me to use that or are you gonna call me as we discussed earlier?
I thought it was, sorry.
Is there Zoom capabilities upstairs?
I'm gonna go over the table. They're going to call you. But that was the right protocol. Thank you. But we will call you.
Okay.
Right. Left side starts.
I'm seeing you want to bring your laptop, which you, I did send, uh,
We did an executive session. Give the motion.
Move to approve all separation agreements dated May 2nd, 2022.
Second. Movement by Comfort Johnson and second by Comfort Christensen. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Name? Ryan, question, yeah. Thanks for the meeting. The city council is made by 322. No further to come before the council this evening. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
So move by, Councilwoman Hallway is named by Councilwoman Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.